I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for attending the meeting tonight. I appreciate everybody who's here in the audience and also at home. As I typically do, at least like to recognize those around the table. So if you haven't been here before, if you haven't watched at home before, you know who's who's here. So we have Brittany Corret, so she is our town clerk. John Pachotti, town councillor. Stephanie Thibodeau, my vice chair. Town manager, Michelle Floiling. Adam Lorette, our councillor. Peter Lawrence, councillor and secretary. And myself, Matt Townsend, chairman. So the first order of business are the public announcements and details may be found at Number one, the Lawrence Public Library. Comprehensive program details online and via the LPL social media. Haunted Stacks, we're putting the boo in books. Haunted Stacks will be after hours on October 30th and 31st from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. New program, beginning November 8th, Bridge with Friends on Fridays, from 1:00 to 4:00, drop-in. Enjoy an afternoon of the card game Bridge. Bring a friend. Number two, upcoming election information. Absentee ballots are available at the town office and online. There will be late hours on Monday, October 28th. The town office will be open until 6:00 p.m. to allow people to vote absentee or register to vote outside of regular business hours. The last day to request an absentee ballot is Friday, October 31st. Register to vote or update your information in person at the town office. Voter registration by mail is by mail or online is no longer available. New voters must provide proof of residency and identification. And new voters to Fairfield must provide proof of residency.
Is there a typo? This is that Thursday, the October 31st?
Yeah, probably is. Thursday, isn't it?
It is a Thursday.
So it's still Thursday, October 31st. Nice job, Peter. Good job. Keeping us keeping us online. So the second order of business are the public hearings. There are none tonight. The third order of business, public comments, limited to three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council or request opportunity to speak on a specific item that is on the agenda, or may email comments for council to info@fairfield-me.gov by 4:00 p.m., day of meeting. Submitted content may be read aloud at this time. And do you want to have, I'll let you say your piece.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to the to reserve a place to speak on any of the agenda items? Tim?
Thank you very much.
Is there, okay, Ron?
Yeah, I'll do number one, and I'd like to do number three also, please.
Of course. Thank you.
Anybody else want to reserve the right to speak? Okay, thank you.
Public comments at this time? Any that have been mailed or online?
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you. Fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees, the town manager report.
All right. So it's a little short this week because most everything for the last two weeks, we're going to be discussing throughout the agenda anyway. But just to give you a quick update, the asbestos investigation for 202 Main Street and 31 Lawrence Ave did start today. So hopefully we'll have those results back if they complete within the next couple of days, within the next couple of weeks. So that will be a good piece. And then also, the auditors are here, they're starting the 2324 audit. That process did start this week. So that's going on. And then also, not long before your meeting, I did receive a call from the superintendent who let me know that the school board back on May 16th, 2024, had a motion of 24, 5, 29, and they voted to transfer the Fairfield Primary School to the Town of Fairfield and be adopted in form presented to this meeting and that the attested copy of the vote be filed with the minutes of this meeting. I have requested a copy of what that document is so that you will have that. But basically, she called to let me know that the town council will have a six-month process in which to, sounds like, have a hearing, vote to accept the school. If you don't want to keep the school, you could sell the school. But the school is currently paying all of the utilities, the insurance, the heat, the water, the sewer, it is vacant, but they are keeping up that. When that transfers to the municipality, you'll be responsible to pick up those costs if you so choose to do so. I'm getting some more information, but this is the first communication I've had about this. So we're working on it. But I know it's come up a couple of times, and I got that phone call today.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? Hearing done. We have our committee reports.
Economic and community development is not meeting in November because of Election Day. We'll be meeting on the first Tuesday in December.
Nothing for buildings at this point? Nothing for P5s at this point? So the fifth order of business is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or standard business and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests prior to consideration of this portion of the agenda, which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered next on the agenda. Item 24-145, order that the Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the reading of and accepts the minutes for meeting number 2024-19, held on October 6th, 2024. Number, item 24-146, order that the Town Council hereby approves charges warrant in the amount of $256,411.89, which includes, but is not limited to, fine line paving, Harris computer, Ranger contracting, and United Construction and Forestry.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? 5-0, thank you. Moving to the sixth order of business, old business, parks and recreation survey discussion.
Want me to do it? Do you want me to do it?
Sure, I'll let you lead.
Since the last meeting, did you all have a chance to take a look at the survey?
Yes.
And did you have any questions on it? It's pretty straightforward. And it's just the initial activity to get conversation going on a Parks and Rec department because it is stated in the comprehensive plan that we do have a discussion on it. What I would like to see happen is, because we have budget season coming up, we've got some several other big irons in the fire. I would like to table this discussion until possibly the second meeting in January. We'll have some new people on board that can have the get in on the on the first big discussion, and I think that would be more advantageous. So for me, I would like to table this until January, and I don't know how you all feel.
I'll make a motion that we table it until January.
A second, that too.
Okay.
A motion to do that, but any other discussion? I think I think it sounds reasonable to me. Obviously, there's a lot going on the next couple of months, and there will be a little bit of a turnover, one way or the other. And so I think that is important. And I, yeah, I think it's good to start off the, but I think because of our process to have old business, it's not going to be forgotten about. So it's going to be something we're going to keep forward, bring up and working forward.
Yeah. Okay. Do you need to vote?
Yeah. So we should vote to table?
Second meeting in January? Second meeting in January?
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on first or second.
Because the first meeting's our business meeting.
Is your organizational, yep.
Yeah.
All those in favor of tabling? Thank you. Seventh order of business, take action on the following items of business as read by the council chair. Item 24-147, order the Town Council hereby approves the purchase of purchase of 222,0778.9 worth of patrol vehicle computer equipment with funds to come from a Homeland Security grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Chief, do you mind filling us in on this? Thank you.
Because of the expansion in the vehicles, we needed some more equipment. We currently have enough equipment to outfit the vehicles, but it's elderly, and it's, you know, end of life. So this grant popped up. With a discussion with members of that department, we decided it would be a good idea to start the replacement process. And this grant will cover the installation, all of the items that we need for it, the tablets, the printers, the cabling, everything for three complete patrol vehicles. So it'll replace three of the eight systems that we currently have.
Are those going to be the oldest ones or the most recent ones that need it?
We will replace the oldest first.
Okay.
And the the system that we have, if you recall, is rebuildable. So we can ship the old ones back and they will rebuild them, and then we can put them back into the fleet or have them as spares. It's constantly, you know, they're electronics. We have issues with them all the time. One goes down here, one goes down there. We'll at least have a spare or a couple of spares to give out should that occur.
Will this grant cover more than three vehicles?
Just the just the amount that we purchased. We purchased everything we needed for three complete vehicles.
So that's it?
Right.
Okay.
But this is a revolving grant. We get it every year.
Okay.
And we try to refresh our oldest pieces of equipment and purchase new pieces of equipment that we think will be useful to us every year utilizing this grant.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? No. I think it's, I mean, it's straightforward, and I think it's definitely a nice job to get the grant and to use it that way. So.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, motion. We already had a motion.
You have a motion and a second?
A second. So. All those and any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor? The eighth order of business, council workshop and other business. The first one is to discuss the Fire Department ambulance service. How do you want to lead on this one?
So the last time you had a meeting to discuss this, you asked for additional budget comparison data. So that is the spreadsheet that you received. There was a minor correction from what was posted online, the very last column that said what the percentage difference was, and the math was actually pulling from a prior year's budget. So that's been fixed. That's why you got a new copy tonight, an updated one will be posted tomorrow. So what you received was basically a document that looks just exactly like what we would put together for budget season. It shows what the current year's budget is that was approved, and then it shows what it would look like. I'm just trying to get it up on the screen here so everybody else can see it. Okay. So then it shows what we would have if we did three new staff and we did our own transportation, meaning we would purchase an ambulance and do transport, or what it would look like if you just did three new staff and you continued your relationship with Delta Ambulance, and how that deviated from the current year's budget. So as I worked through that process, obviously from this document, you'll realize that the two largest expenses, well, the one largest expense, no matter what you do, is going to be the staff.
Yep.
Right? That's going to be the biggest cost. Let's estimate it barring, this is using current insurance rates. This is using, you know, current negotiated contract prices with a 5% rate increase. Right? So you still have a contract to negotiate either way. The fire contract expires. But that gets you started. And then you go down through the remainder of the budget and the various components that the chief had said that you would need to have. So one of them being medical supplies. Right? So we already have a $10,000 medical supply budget. But if you had an ambulance, he predicts we'd have to increase it to at least $19,700. But if you do two staff, just for a general increase in medical supplies, which we would do anyway, it would go to $12,500. So those types of comparisons is what continues all the way down through. And then, so there's some changes when it comes to, we'd have to purchase new radios for three new people. You have to do that regardless, whether you stay with Delta, whether you don't. The bigger pieces come down into play when you start looking at the expenses. Okay? So what's the expense for Delta? So this year, it's $161,950. If you didn't go with Delta, obviously you wouldn't have that expense. If you do go with Delta, it's another $226,000. So that's comparison was side by side there.
Is that with or without the 5% discount?
That's without. Because I don't know if that will be offered again next year, and it was, anyway. So and then things that we know, what the change in your professional liability insurance would be if you go with an ambulance and you don't. So there's certain things we know. At the time when I put this together, because our workers' comp is all lumped in, I didn't know what our basis was, but I did know how it was calculated. So it was a rough estimate of about a $10,000 increase, no matter what you do. Because it's not based upon whether you have an ambulance, it's based upon how many staff we have. Our pumper service, debt service for the pumper that we have now, that will expire. That final payment gets made in April of '25. So obviously, that would be blank as an expense going zero for both years. But if you purchase an ambulance, while you lose the fee for Delta ambulance, you do have the cost of the ambulance, which includes not only the cost of the ambulance, but as well as the stretcher and the chair piece that we would need to have. Or you don't have that cost, but we would have to replace the cabin chassis to the existing Med 1 with an estimated cost of $75,000. And then you have your totals for that. And we're going to get to Med 1 in a minute because there's a big development on that front. So parts of that, what you have afterwards is the revenue. So you have your total expenses for each, which you can see the increase if we did ambulance service. The budgetarily wise, it's up $734,000. If you stay with Delta, it's up $594,000. But then we have the revenue that we received. So we have the amount that we get from Benton or just in general. If you were to go with an ambulance transport service, I would suggest that you ask Benton to give you what they currently give to Delta to add to the offset our costs. You would use up to $350,000 from the equipment reserve account from Fire to offset the cost of the ambulance. Or if you stay with just, you stay with Delta, we Benton would, their price would increase, we wouldn't have that revenue. And we would only use $75,000 from the equipment reserve to cover, that's all you need for the cabin chassis. Other revenues stay the same. The biggest revenue offset, as had been mentioned in the last time we discussed this, was the potential for the revenue generated from ambulance billing. We still do not know the number that Delta collects from the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Benton. What we do know is that they constantly state the fact that if Fairfield and Benton were to leave, it's about a $900,000 loss for Delta. So going off from that, going off from what we knew was probably almost $400,000 in fees between the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Benton that they paid to Delta, that would leave you $500,000 in billing revenue. We went conservative and we only used $400,000 because we don't know what that number is. There is no cost in this budget for outside ambulance billing charges because the company we would hire would take their fees from the monies that they collect, similar to what we already have in the Fire Department accident billing. Same exact process. If they, we get paid, they get paid. We don't get paid, they don't get paid. It's, that's, that's how we would work that. So then in year one, the grand total, when you take what your revenues and expenses, your expenses minus your revenues, the budget for going with an ambulance service is just over 1.1 million, which in all actuality, when you look at the math, is $56,000 less than what the budget was this year. If you don't, and you stay with Delta, and you stay with the three employees, it's a $1.7 million budget, which is $547,000 more than it was last year. That's year one. If you think about the fact that you would probably need, well, we need to potentially look at the next year, the second year, hiring three more staff. So that gives you four people per shift. So while you wouldn't have an ambulance expense if you stayed with the ambulance side, you would still probably have at least another $400,000 in staff expense that you would have to pick up with probably not much more, we wouldn't know, and I wouldn't dare guess. We'd have a better understanding as to what your ambulance billing is so to know what the revenue is that offsets those costs. Granted, the Town of Benton should be paying 25% of that bill, and they're pretty close to that anyway, even if you stay with Delta. So you're going to be looking at those increases regardless of what you do. The other piece that we said that you wanted to keep in mind was the fact that Delta only has to give us 90 days written notice and they no longer come. Folks need to keep in mind that ambulance service is not a required service of a municipality. So there's no law that mandates that you provide this service. It's usually a little bit unfathomable, but it is the case. And then how will that all work? So Chief Leary is here to answer any questions you have whatsoever about this budget and how this looks. But the reason why I said we need to get back to Med 1 is because it lost its engine yesterday. And so we are at a point where we are going to have to make a decision of exactly what you're going to do for a type of vehicle for that fire department. We don't have an exact solution for you at the moment, other than the fact that we are currently working at potentially negotiating using a vehicle from a neighboring municipality while we work through the process and figure out exactly what you want to do, and we can find out what's available. And Travis has been working on that all day.
I have a question.
And yes.
What if, I knew about Med 1.
Yep.
What if, because I know about Oakland and Sydney have an ambulance but non-transporting.
Yep.
Is there opportunity for Fairfield to do the same thing?
To to purchase?
To replace Med 1 and without the additional expense for the stretcher and stuff in there?
So, so yeah, we could buy an ambulance to replace Med 1 and not have, because we don't have a transport license. So we could just utilize utilize it as a first response vehicle like we do now. So yeah, that that is, that is definitely an option. And, you know, probably one of our better options because in the event that down the road, even if it's five years from now, you know.
We have opportunity to get the stretcher and other stuff in it, just in case we do transition.
And we're that much closer to it, yeah.
So putting a new engine in the vehicle isn't an option?
No, no, it is. It's, you know, it's just going to be how much money we want to put into to certain vehicles and and what is the best option, I guess. We really do need some sort of pickup truck because we have a boat that we need to haul, we have an Argo that we need to haul to to emergency calls. Obviously, we will not be able to haul that with an ambulance.
Do you have any idea how much a replacement engine would cost?
So I got a bunch of calls out yesterday and today, and I'm waiting on quotes and estimates and all that type of stuff, so. We've been looking at availability for, you know, buying a new truck, and so I'm just waiting on on dealerships and vendors to get back.
We've been dealt a hand, haven't we?
Yep.
Oh, my goodness. You know, we have, when you think about the the cost of a new vehicle, say, an ambulance, and we have down here $400,000, right, for the for the ambulance.
Yes.
We have money already set aside for incidents, and the $350,000 that is in the Capital Reserve that we would put forth on this to help pay for the ambulance is not, just so you all know out in the in the audience and in the public, that $350,000 does not deplete the Capital Reserve account. So there will be money left in there. We also have options where we have a lot in money markets that we could utilize funds for. I think that if we talk about this as an option, we could take out a loan through the money market and then pay it off. Again, we're not having to get new money in, but we have that money there. And our money markets have done very, very well over the past years. There is $125,000 left in opera, Michelle?
About, yep.
About that. So we do have some money there that we could use that won't tax the taxpayer. So I think financially, we have options, and I think that's good.
Yeah.
The question is, what route do we want to go? Do we want to take the plunge and go for an ambulance and maybe do, like you said, Peter, work into that transport system? But again, I hear budget season, and we have a budget to put together. And do we, well, next year, what is it, $261,000 for Delta next year?
$26,000.
$226,000 for Delta.
And that's at the, so that's at the 35.
Yeah.
And that's the estimate that they provided us at the end of this last fiscal year. So that's if that stays. That could be contingent on whether or not the hospitals continue to provide them funding, which they said was questionable. And that's if nobody else withdraws. So while they talk about Fairfield and Benton leaving and what the impact is of that financially, they did not have the numbers of, say, Sydney and Oakland teaming up and leaving.
Right.
Right? So in other municipalities. But that's what we have for an estimate, and that's the number I used.
Right. About three weeks ago, the town manager, Adam, Peter, and I went to a meeting in China about Delta. And I'd been asked, I'd asked them previously because we had a chance to send questions and to them, and then they would respond. And I had asked them what Plan B was, if this plan that they're working on right now doesn't work. They don't have a Plan B. And they, the gentleman said that they would probably have to fold. So I feel badly about it, but I'm also thinking, we're an aging community. We need to have some people to help us in case of emergency. And I am all for maximizing our preparedness for such a thing because it helps all of us as citizens in the long run. I, I've had the floor, somebody else to talk.
I have another question, just for Travis.
Yeah.
You said you need a truck for the whole, I saw it the other day, Med 1.
Yeah.
Is the brush truck hooked up for that?
We do have a hitch for that, so when we do have a woods fire, we can hook up to that and take it. Yeah. The, you know, the other incidents like winter time when we have snowmobile accidents and stuff like that, that would be the, that would be the other side of that. But yes, in the springtime, when we have woods fires, the brush truck does have the capability to haul that. Yeah. And my vehicle would probably haul the boat. I don't think I would dare haul the Argo with it, but the boat's pretty light, so.
And his vehicle needs to be replaced as well.
So just for some clarity here, because I, I guess a few weeks ago or months ago now, when we talked about this.
Yep.
We had discussed potentially, you know, if this situation happened, which here we are, replacing Med 1 with this. There was no conversation about what we still need, because it was going to replace that space in the, so essentially, it would be an additional vehicle. Where would it go?
So it, like, if we kept the pickup, you mean?
Well, yeah, because you mentioned you'd still get a pickup anyways.
Yeah.
Or want one.
Yeah.
And if we had that transport that replaced Med 1.
Right. So so we do have, there's a bay space in the station that the brush truck is housed in. Typically, you know, we we use that in the springtime during during fire season, what we call it, when the dry spell before things green up. And so there is room if we if we move that outside, or the pickup truck would not need to be housed inside as well. That could be housed outside. So we would have that first bay free and/or shuffle vehicles down the line and open up those first two bays, basically.
So would the pickup be equipped to be like Med 1?
If we had an ambulance, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. If we had, if we had an ambulance and we.
That's what I'm wondering, is if we're somehow getting another vehicle too.
So just to give you a, you know, a situational thing, I guess. If we bought an ambulance and we we fix the med truck, that would be stripped of basically most equipment and used as a utility vehicle and/or to haul the boat, haul the, haul the Argo, and that's basically it.
Okay.
And then the ambulance would be fully equipped with all of our equipment, whether we transport or not, and will actually benefit us because we can actually put a lot more equipment in it than we can right now. in it than we can right now on our pickup truck. We're very limited with space in the pickup truck, so we have everything in the backseat of that thing and kind of free-floating around, so. So an ambulance having all that equipment would actually allow us a lot more, a lot more room.
Still concerned too about space.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So then the other thing that you do is that instead of, so the Explorer, which is the current chief's vehicle, which is a hammy-down from the police department, because it was no longer suitable for police service, is also on its last leg. So if you replace that with a pickup truck, it fills that need. So today, like the conversation that we had was, because we don't currently have Med 1, was, you know, talk to the police department, because we may need them to respond to a call to move a piece of equipment should we need something to go somewhere. So we're working right now on what can we do, because other things that we've done before, we've had instances where Med 1 is down, and we have put the Explorer in service to serve as Med 1 to go on those quick calls. The issue that we're running into is that because of the condition of the Explorer, it's not going to do any more than just make that clock tick even faster on its useful life, because it's been limping along and costing us a lot of money in repairs. So you just, this has happened too quickly for us to give you a definitive plan as to what's your best possible option is for tonight. What may end up happening is we may very well have to call you for an emergency council meeting in order to make that decision, once we do have more definitive information. For those of you that were on the council when we lost the use of the pumper trucks that we had, which would have been about five years ago, there wasn't any money in capital reserves at that time, because we had used everything we needed to pay for the ladder truck for our match for that. But what we were able to do was basically take out a vehicle loan for the pumper and pay that price every year out of our existing capital reserve appropriation. So like Council Tivido said, there are some creative things that we can do with this to help fund it, depending on what you need to do. What you need to do, though, is decide what you need to do. I think we can figure out ways to afford either option very easily without it impacting tax dollars, you just need to give us the direction of which way we should go.
Travis, how long do you think the Explorer will be with us, be last?
Well, I'm trying to make it as long as I can. I know the last vehicle inspection that Public Works did, they said that the rocker panels have pretty much had it, and the transmission is definitely acting up.
In two months?
We didn't think Med 1 was going to die yesterday either.
I really don't dare say that.
It sounds like within.
I'm going to try to squeeze all the life out of it.
Within a short time, we're going to need a truck.
Four months.
No, you can't. Is the box in good shape on Med 1?
The bed, yes, the bed is in, the rear utility bed is in good shape, because we just purchased that, I'm going to say five or four, five years ago. The original bed that came on the truck, the cross members had rotted off, so at that point, we needed to fix it, and I believe we put about $20,000 into that truck back then.
So basically, we're looking at just replacing the cab and the chassis?
Yeah, if we were, if that's the option.
If that's the option.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't it be nice, and I'm throwing this out, we could take the ARPA money to pay for replacing the cab and the chassis on Med 1. That way, you'd have your pickup, and you can haul the Argo, and it's not using any of the taxpayers' money. And it really fits in line for what the ARPA money was designed for.
I think we've done a decent job of having that money instead of using it for, you know, we've saved it for one-off.
I don't think it should be $125,000, something like that, but you never know.
Have you priced out a new pickup truck lately?
That also does give us time to continue to explore the use case or feasibility of having an ambulance for when the Explorer then goes, because that is coming too. It seems like regardless of what we do, we get the transport now or not, you're going to need a pickup. So that pickup is irrelevant if we have Delta or not. So that would be my recommendation.
So one of the things too, we discussed, and I think it's important to provide the type of service we want to provide, and also keep our, you know, fire department members safe, make sure we added more staff, but that's a big part of that budget. The problem is, do we actually think we can add those three and then add potentially another three in year two?
Yeah, and that definitely is.
It's always a possibility. So those programs that used to, that during COVID, the programs that did the trainings for a lot of your EMTs, a lot of your emergency responders, those programs which require a lot of hands-on attention were put on hold, some of those are coming back. I can tell you right now, well, I can't guarantee it, but I'd be pretty assured of the fact that if you don't have a transport service, you're not going to hire a paramedic. There's a very good possibility the paramedics we have, we will lose, and you will know that you have your basic and maybe advanced EMTs, and we would wait for them to go through those programs. And then you would have the firefighter folks. So the firefighter side, because now that we have the training facility and the schools that are being done through that training facility, we're able to train folks up for that, we're keeping an eye on any time we get a chance to send someone in for their EMT, EMT advanced training, and hopefully folks are going to start coming back into those jobs. You could post three jobs today, you could post six jobs today, it's quite frankly a crapshoot as to whether anybody will fill them or not, we just don't know.
Well, I would feel better if, when you look at the overall budget, our budget for the fire department, correct me if I'm wrong, was $1,478, let me fix that, $1,478,474.35.
In expenses.
In expenses. And the overall budget for '24, '25, when you take in revenue, was what, Michelle?
Once you take in revenue, was $1,168,254.35.
So when we look at the budget for next year, which would include three new hires, an ambulance, and utilizing $350,000 from capital reserve, the projected budget for '25, '26 for the fire department is actually $56,000 less.
Yes, because it's not.
So that's just for that year.
Right, and that's because of the fact that you had the $350,000 that you would use to offset the ambulance purchase costs and the $400,000 in potential billing revenue.
And not paying Delta.
And not paying Delta. Right, so that expense, so that big expense is out, but you have the big expense of the ambulance.
Right. And the other part too, is that we would have the mutual aid going on at the same time. So where we own, and we have it now, so when you think, well, there's only one ambulance in the town of Fairfield, what happens if there's two accidents? Then mutual aid kicks in, and that's working really well. I hate to put this off and keep you in limbo, and my feeling is that we should go for the ambulance, utilize what we can with resources that we already have, and primarily, I'm looking at money, using some money market money, using that, take a loan out on ourselves and then gradually pay it back, because we're going to have to pay for a pickup truck, which once you get all the doodads in it and everything, it's going to be close to $75,000. So keep that money in capital reserve to pay for that. And then, it's a big plunge, and it's a commitment, but I'm going, and I've talked with people, and a lot of people are on the fence, they don't know what we should do. And then those that do know, they're about 50/50, yes and no, we're not in the transport business. However, I don't trust Delta, I'm afraid they're going to fold. And if they fold, what happens to us? And I think it's our duty to make sure that our citizens are taken care of, and we have control over this if we have our own ambulance service. We can't control what's happening with Delta. So I would be in favor of us going for an ambulance and using money from our money markets and not be, so that it's not a tax burden. I don't know how else you guys feel, but I'm ready to make that commitment tonight.
My biggest thing right now is getting Med 1 back up.
And that needs to happen now.
Right before that vehicle dies too, that's the biggest priority right now. The ambulance can talk about at the next budget, but we need to focus on getting Med 1 back up and going.
So your plan then, Peter, is to go and do Med 1 and get it up and running again, and put off talking about an ambulance for '25, '26? And I disagree.
We just did a big budget too, but we just had a most very important thing just go down, we need to be focused getting that back up, even getting the ambulance non-transporting, take care of that.
So I'm looking at the 226, oh, those numbers, $226,000 for Delta for '25, '26, right? It's a $180,000 difference if we go with an ambulance service. If we purchase our own ambulance, the difference is $180,000 compared to what we will pay Delta for '25, '26. And then we're just putting it off and putting it off and putting it off. To me, if we've been talking about this for over a year, it's time to get off the pot and say something, and I'm saying, let's do it. So, I mean, I don't trust Delta, they can't have a Plan B that doesn't settle well for business for me, so.
And I do, we do know the other towns are looking, and if we get hung out to dry.
Because you know Oakland and Sidney has ambulance already but non-transport, because they're looking too down the road, just taste the water.
And see, and you brought that question up and asked the chief, and we could have an ambulance and then gradually do that, but with budget season upon us, I really think that we need to make a commitment and not leave our chief and town manager up in the air as to what we're going to do, plus the citizens that are listening to this and wondering, will I be able to get the medical care I need in case of an emergency? I mean, without a doubt, Med 1 has to be fixed up.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So yeah, that's like priorities, like tonight, what do we need to do, Med 1?
That's number one, Med 1.
So how do we do that?
Make a motion.
So do we do, do we, but do we take?
It's going to take money.
Do we take advantage of ARPA funds for that?
Yes, so I'll make the motion.
Could I make a suggestion that you actually just use the capital reserve funds that you have that is specifically for fire equipment for that? You can always make an adjustment later and use the ARPA to fund alongside something else.
Right, because we have till the end of '24.
That money doesn't roll, no, so our ARPA funds were allocated all at once because we use them as a revenue loss. So you have, so they've already been reported to the feds that we've used them 100%.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that.
So those are sitting there, and your capital reserve amounts don't, they don't expire at the end of the year, they continue to roll. But if you are going to fix Med 1, then I would suggest that you use your capital reserve funds that you already have for the fire department to fix that. And if you decide in a month you're going to buy an ambulance, you can then use capital reserve and the other. The issue is, is, and this is the part I cannot stress to you enough, three employees in that department is going to have a $500,000 impact, $400,000 impact, easy. And staying with Delta, that's $500,000, because I don't want anybody to say nobody was told about the increase in this budget.
And that's, that's if, I mean, we have not, we have not solidified that we, there's really three options. The third option is we don't have any staff increase, and that's not budgeted out here.
But I can tell you that that will lead to an option where you probably will not have a full-time fire department, because we're looking at legal issues like that.
Yep.
Okay? To say that it's an option on the table, it is, it will come thoroughly, you won't even need to worry about fixing Med 1.
All right, so I will make a motion.
Yeah, the only thing is, we talked about, so what's the best option for us vehicle-wise to keep ourselves, our options open down the road?
Yeah, so, so I think there's just a lot happening all at once, yeah. I think that, like Mr. Lawrence stated, I think the primary concern right now is, what are we going to do operationally for a vehicle for first response? And you have a couple of options, we can fix Med 1, we can buy a new cabin chassis, or we can purchase an ambulance, we could even purchase a used ambulance to fulfill that need right now. The transport aspect, you know, I think we still need to have some discussions about that, because the call volume that we have with one ambulance is going to be extremely difficult. I'll be 100% honest with you, we have a lot of overlapping calls, and they're increasing every year. So it is going to be difficult with one ambulance, I'm going to be 100% honest with you. So the staffing levels is also a huge piece of that, you know? If we don't have the staff to do the call, to respond to the calls and the equipment, then, you know, is the service going to be at the level that we want it to be and at the level it should be? So I think if we focus on the vehicle at this point, and then in the next couple of months, we can continue this conversation with the other aspects, but that's my train of thought.
Fix the Med 1, put a new engine in it, transmission, and what was the other option?
We could, we could look at buying an ambulance right now, new, used, however you want to do it, and that would get us that step closer, you know, to the transporting aspect, and then worry about the, you know, obviously, we do have to worry about the pickup portion of it. But, but I think if we, there's too many moving pieces here, but if we, if we were to purchase an ambulance right now and convert that into our first response vehicle, like Mr. Lawrence said, and then maybe fix the med truck as it sits right now for a fairly, you know, less fee than replacing it, then we would have our pickup truck and have a new first response vehicle.
And if your vehicle goes down, we had our ambulance, you have a vehicle.
Right, right.
So what we can do is get more definitive information as to what this is going to cost.
Yeah, we don't know what availability is.
And as soon as we have that put together, which like we said, he's been working on it for two days, we can schedule an emergency meeting for you, well, it's not just a non-standard meeting for you next week, in which that would be your only topic of discussion, but by then, we would have a better plan where exactly where the funding would come from. Because there could be a big difference between whether or not, is it just a new motor, or is it other components in the engine that also need to be replaced? So are we talking a $12,000 fix, or are we talking a $25,000 fix for a body that's already aging and has, you know, in a vehicle that already has been on the road for a large number of hours? So we can work on that as your option as well, because again, it has been a very fast-moving target, and we can acquire more definitive information so you can make a better, solid choice.
So with budget season upon us, and I'm good with that, and that $226,000 that we'll be paying Delta, I'm not going to let that go.
That's $25,000.
Then we can talk about an ambulance then.
But when are we going to talk about it? This is October, do you want to do it next month, have that discussion about yay and nay on an ambulance?
Let's wait and see what they get for ideas on what it's going to cost to fix Med 1 and things like that, then we can have another option after that.
Because the other thing that we're working on is we are talking to a neighboring community about using one of their spare emergency vehicles while we, because even if we said today we were going to fix Med 1, it's not going to be fixed tomorrow. Right, so that is one of the things that we're working on, and I'll have more information on that after next Monday.
We need to make a decision on this ambulance thing before the end of the year, so that we go into budget season in January knowing what we want.
I think that's a reasonable expectation.
And I could, I can live with that.
But yeah, I'd hate to make that decision tonight, based on like.
I'll tell you where, you know where I'm standing.
Yeah, but I think it's important to know.
Just pie in the sky, right? Love to live there, but you mentioned potentially needing a second ambulance. Would that be after year one or year two?
Would that be after year one or year two staffing?
So.
Because would year one even give us enough staffing to potentially run two?
Right, that, no, we wouldn't have enough.
Okay.
Yep. So that, and that's where the, like, if you remember when the audit study was done, they, you know, recommended going for four per shift because of the fact of our overlapping calls. So two people on the first ambulance, two people stay back, and in the event there's a second call and we have a second ambulance, they get on the second ambulance and respond to the second call. You know, obviously, if there's a fire, then all four people are going to be tied up at the fire, and that's just the way it is. But that's how we do things now. If we have a fire right now, we're not going to be available to handle any other calls, because we just don't have the staff. So the second ambulance also comes into play when instances like this happen. If we go down for maintenance, if something breaks, then, then we have no ambulance. So now we're back to relying on whoever else is available, you know, and that's a big reason why we have two in Clinton, just for that reason itself, to cover second calls and/or if one is down for maintenance, the second one is, you know, is there to go.
And we got to think of all two, showing that secondary ambulance too. We're building already bacon.
So if we can get some numbers, because everything's kind of fluid right now, I hate to make a knee-jerk reaction under pressure without having and making a best decision. So if we can maybe have that for next week, if you guys, if you guys are available for next week.
I've got several vendors and dealers looking for what's available and what's out there. Just waiting to hear back.
Yeah, I appreciate that, chief.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we'll try to avoid Halloween, but maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, that kind of thing. Well, there's already a PFAS meeting Tuesday, so probably Wednesday next week. Okay, we can do that, as soon as we have the information, we'll let you know.
I know some people reserve some time to speak if you want to, who have some thoughts?
Hello, Council, Ronald McClagan for the record. Obviously, hearing all this, it's very disturbing for the town. One question, I'd like, I'd like to have Mr. Larry come up so I could ask him a few questions. What happened to Med One? Could I ask that question, please?
So the mechanic said that it spun a bearing, basically.
Travis.
Another thing is.
Travis is going to yell.
So you spun a bearing in the engine, so it's going to need a complete engine, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Obviously, hearing tonight is, we're still pushing for the EMS situation. Right now, as we stand, Council, we are understaffed, like I told you many meetings ago. I'm going to ask you again, chief. You just put in a report the other day, I read it, you're fully staffed. What the report said the other day, you're fully staffed right now. Are you legally, right now, fully staffed at your fire station?
I don't know if there's a legal definition.
You sure that there's not supposed to be four personnel?
There's NFPA recommendations.
What is that? So could you tell me what NFPA recommendations are for that fire station, full-time?
Questions to redirect to you.
Would be four, yeah.
Can you redirect, can you redirect to the council if you have questions?
Okay, so NFPA standard states that there shall be four personnel at a full-time fire station. How many do we have there right now, Council?
We know we shorthanded, we did our audit, right?
He just, he just said, though, in his report that he just put out the other day, that he's fully staffed.
He's fully staffed based upon the current budgeted positions.
And that's why the two options show an increase of three.
So like I said last time at the meeting before, Council, we need to get him some help.
Yeah, and I agree.
That's, on both options, that's there.
Yeah.
Firefighters are what he needs right now.
The projected budget for 25, 26 will include three positions.
Three positions.
Three positions, yeah.
With the plan that the 26, 27 budget would include three more, so therefore, what happens is, is you don't end up having to try to get all six all at once. It's less of a budgetary impact and less of a tax impact.
I'm just trying to help him out, Council. I was here at the last meeting, as you saw, and I want this man to have firefighters. Obviously, I know that they're not easy to get. I know that there is standards out there, and I'd like to see this town be brought up to standards ASAP before we get ourselves in trouble.
And that's what we're trying to do, I think that's where, and so we hear you loud and clear, and that's why it's in the budget coming up, but, yeah.
Now, my next question would be, Council, is if we put all these people in, and since he's standing here right now, will you have enough room at the fire station right now for your personnel, okay, to be housed at the fire station?
Sure. So, so we would have to have bedroom and bunk sharing, but we could do it.
So it would be shareable room?
Now they each have their individual, and we have to go to sharing.
So that's another thing, Council, we're going to have to look at also when we do all this, add more personnel to his roster, is the capacity of the fire station. So it's just another thing that we've got to keep on our minds.
Why we're looking at that, that's great, and that's why we're looking at, you know, the building audit, because it's obviously, we are tight.
Thank you very much.
Tim Martin. I think the discussion's great for now, as we know that there are going to be a lot of things that need to be decided in the future. But right now, what we do know is that we just spent $900,000 to $1 million in undesignated fund to keep our budget where we can be. That's one-time money, it's gone, it's not going to be there next year. Stuff as far as the, the funds, the CD money market, I used it. I used all of that rate to keep the taxes down where they were. So it's, it's not there. It's already gone, already spent on this year's budget, and we're going to need it on next year's budget, even if it stays flat. So when Delta was here three, four weeks ago, that's not the information that they gave us. Obviously, I wasn't privy to your meeting and your Plan B, but the 226 was rolled back to the 161. I think it's imperative that we look at other avenues to keep the towns that are currently with Delta and work together with those towns to make sure that they stay with Delta, so Delta is a viable option, to look at Skowhegan, 20 minutes up the road, our border to the north. Rank Fairview is a for-profit hospital, they have an ambulance service. Maybe they could take on our ambulance service. We just pointed out that if we add staff, we already, we know we need a new fire station, we know we need a new police station. All these things cost money, and our taxpayers don't have it right now. I'm running a Thanksgiving food drive right now that demands twice what it was last year. For $25, I mean, it's crazy. And, and I think about senior citizens, going to choose between paying their taxes? Do I put food on the table? Do I pay my prescriptions? They've got an 18% to 20% increase, all of us have, on average this year. Now, I don't know if EMS can charge a fee for going, maybe that's an avenue to look. I know Travis's call volumes, they're through the roof, and I understand the need. I also know that because Waterville-Winslow pulled out, the demand for that EMS service staff is also through the roof, they don't exist. They're double-staffed, they're working at Delta and Winslow, or Delta and Waterville, part-time here, full-time there. We're going to create more demand for, for people that don't exist. So some of the figures that were in, in the spreadsheets, they're, they're way off, they're hypotheticals. $400,000 in anticipated revenue, where does that come out? What's an ambulance ride? You know, I, I have no idea what an average ambulance ride is, but I do know you're not insuring a $400,000 ambulance for $1,200. That I do know. And so that's in that figure. Professional liability, E and O, it's going to go up, staffing six more people, there's more risk. So a lot of those things are hypotheticals. When on the revenue business, it looks great on paper to say, well, we'd be $56,000 less if we do this. It's, it's not going to happen. We could be $800,000, $1 million more in the hole, like our neighbors next door possibly are. We need to explore, where's Winslow at? Where's Skowhegan at? If an ambulance service was profitable, which we show on paper that it looked like it could be, why don't the hospitals do it? Who are two local hospitals that are nonprofits? There's no money in ambulance service, we're worried about Delta falling, or failing and going away. I think we need a plan, definitely, definitely have to have a plan. Where are you coming up with these millions of dollars? And I'm talking millions of dollars. We know we need a fire station, we know we need a police station. Six new people, $700,000, $800,000 in just payroll and expenses? It's not viable right now. It, it needs to be on paper, what do we do if this happens? But today, people, people at home can't afford it. They just can't. Our town budget's $7, $8 million, and when we're looking at adding maybe another $2 million? Where's it coming from? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any more, more discussion? It was good, all right. Thank you very much for those comments, it's definitely a really important issue to this town. A lot of different ways to make it happen, and I think it's good to continue to discuss. Obviously, we have the next meeting next week, we'll have some more numbers to make sure we are able to take care of things that we need to take care of right now, and then continue forward. So I appreciate that. So the number, the second issue from the Eighth Order Business was the West Street parking. So. I know it's a discussion, I know it's brought up actually by a town member. At this point, just around that area on West Street, when you have sporting events or anything else going on, there's a discussion, I don't know how you want to follow, you want me to read what we have from last time, or? I can do that?
Or maybe the town manager can tell us about the meeting between Chief Gould, Chief Larry, and Bruce Williams?
Yep.
It'd be great.
So this stemmed from your last meeting where you did receive an email from a resident concerning the parking that is on the side of West Street, closest to the school and the ballfields. We did, and it was suggested at that time that we have the department heads take a look at that and see if there was a plausible scenario. I did send you a memo on this, that we did meet on the 16th. It was the four of us, and we did discuss the email. Currently, what you have in your public safety ordinance states the fact that no vehicle shall be left parking on the following streets from August 15th through June 30th of the following year. So the current ordinance says, on the easterly side of West Street, from the intersection of Savage Street to the intersection of Elm Street, is our current ordinance. So we looked at what was additional possibilities, everything from barricades, closing the streets, what if you made it one way, we did look at those different scenarios. And basically, the only plausible option that you could do based upon, right, so if you did temporary barricades to shut down the parking during an event, you would have to have somebody from Public Works go, first of all, would have to acquire the barricades, and then the signs, and then put them out, and then take them out when the event was over. And then you would need the police department to provide the service of being, of parking violations, so to monitor that and follow that through. We do have police officers that work at the school during those, most of those events, but their job is to be there for more or less for the crowd, they're not there to be parking monitors. So that would require the current department, the remaining department staff to pick that up, which typically, they are covering calls throughout the community during that time. So, which is where we landed on the fact that the best possible thing for you to do would then be to say, if you're going to do anything, say that there's just no parking allowed on that street. And then not either side, and then therefore, anybody that was parked there, you know, you could instantly be able to have them towed. That's, that's where we were at. Because there's, I, when I talked to the superintendent today, I did let her know that we were discussing this. She said she was going to discuss it with her facilities folks. She felt that the school had sufficient amount of parking, but itself within its parking lots, but wanted to talk to them about that, just, just as I brought it up, and said she would check to see if they thought there was anything alarming about that, if there was no parking ever allowed on both sides of that street. But then again, that also becomes a, we need to monitor, and, and we also didn't believe that that was going to stop people from walking out into traffic in front of oncoming cars, because that happens all the time everywhere. So those were your options.
And one of the worries, it looks like you're concerned about those cars moving down to side streets.
Yes, that also, so if you're not parking on West Street, but then now you're, you're parking on Summit, you're parking on Kelly, you're parking on Elm, so those streets are much narrower than what West Street is, and that's going to narrow that up even more.
Yeah.
Unless you ban parking on those streets too.
They still park there anyway.
Yeah. So. I understand that people are looking for ease of access, of getting in and out of there, that makes sense, I mean, it's, it's been going on for.
Decades.
Decades and decades, we understand that.
Yep.
So, but the concern was brought to you, and that's where we're at.
Interesting that West Street is currently signed for no parking from the easterly side of Savage to Western Ave, right?
Yes, so, yeah, that's the other thing we discovered during our conversation, is that when the road was redone, signs were put up from Savage all the way to Western Ave for no parking, instead of stopping at Elm. So we would like to suggest, because they've been up since Savage Street and the West Street project was completed, so that's been more than a year, is that we actually amend the ordinance to include that, the rest of that entire length, and we haven't had any issues with it, or we'll just have those signs taken down. But they were put up the entire length of that, thinking that that's what the ordinance was, so.
So are people parking on the easterly side during football games?
Not that I'm aware of, unless it's occasionally, but I, I was shown some video today by a resident, and it didn't appear that there were people parked there.
So we're looking at eight weeks out of the year, basically, where there's congestion. I don't see why we, you know. Does every telephone pole have a no parking sign on the east side? Nearly.
Thank you, Bruce.
A couple of other ideas have, sorry. Couple of other ideas have come up tonight that I think may warrant tabling this discussion, so that we can have another meeting with the chiefs and the manager, and come back to you with that.
All right.
Yeah, I appreciate the proactive.
My question is too, I know we're talking about sporting events. What if mainly anywhere else has an event? Because I attended those events before, they packed along the whole side with sports arenas, and they still have the same issue. So, are we just going to, too, if they have an event going on too?
So I think it's nice that we have some other ideas, and that, because I think it is a safety concern, I know it's something that's been going on for decades, and you hate to mess with tradition, but at the same time, about time somebody steps out and gets whacked, and then we're all going to, like, hmm, maybe we should have done something. So I think it's good to have a couple other ideas, and so I appreciate that, Bruce. So do you want to table this?
So we can easily table this to your November 20th meeting?
Yeah, and it's, to be honest, the seasons are.
The season will be over.
We hope for a long playoff run, but season's about, is going to be closing down.
Well, and that might give us some feedback from the school as well.
Right, right.
We got to think about too, the season begins, starts again in March and April for me.
Yeah, usually it's not many, as many people, it's usually during the daytime, so you don't have the nighttime games.
Not a lot.
Yeah. Yep. Yes, you should, because it does apply. Thank you very much for those, the input. Green Road Brush Dump, that's the other one we want to talk about, so I think that was a concern, especially during the leaf and brush season about staying open.
And I brought that up because one of our citizens had emailed me. And especially in November with the leaves, having it open just that first week makes it hard for people who are doing yard cleanups. And I think that maybe what we should do is rethink, maybe April or May and November, so that there's more availability for the citizens to use the dump.
Yeah, sure, during spring, spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup and fall cleanup.
Yeah, I, I've heard from a lot of residents that it's very difficult, I'd love to hear from Bruce about how the trial's been going for the first. from Bruce about how the trial's been going for the first to the seventh.
Yeah.
Bruce Williams, come on down.
See if you get your entrance music up again.
It's been going great. I mean, a lot less illegal dumping. The cameras are working out. Want to extend it? That's your call. There has been a lot of, a lot of phone calls wanting more time.
Yeah.
Wanting to know why it's only open. I think most people have adjusted.
Is April or May a better month, when you think of spring cleanup?
I would think May.
May?
I mean, April was still pretty muddy to get around in your yards and so forth.
Okay. So the question would be, how much more do we have the dump open?
So would you say, like, the entire month of May, the entire month of October, November, or?
The first and third weeks of April, May.
Or the first and second weeks. I mean, come, by Thanksgiving, people should be done.
Usually by the time snow flies, people are done. That's when we close it anyway. It's a very busy area.
Yeah.
The gate got left down or opened last week by somebody, and it was pretty steady business when it shouldn't have been.
So, does anybody here use the Green Road Dump? Because we burn our brush.
Yeah, I do, and I've purposely waited to pick up all my leaves until next week, because I don't want to have them. So, and I know I'm not alone.
So what do you think, Adam? Should, how long should it be? Being a person who uses it?
I, I think during the peak times, like May and October, it should be just month round.
The whole month?
To keep it simple.
Keep it simple.
I think it's very difficult to keep track of. I think during your off-peak, easier to, you know, maintain potential construction debris and all that stuff, to monitor that from the first to the seventh, but not a lot of people reach out.
People will realize that it's open the first month, for an entire month, and we will get the debris.
You think people will abuse it?
Yes.
A lot of times what happens is it's contractors.
But they don't from the first to the seventh, since we've done this.
Correct.
Not as much.
No, they, they do. They do.
They do, just not as much.
We had somebody who came in and.
Well, because it's seven days instead of 30.
Right.
We did have somebody who came in and hit a whole bunch of stuff underneath their brush and dumped the car parts out there.
It's going to happen, for sure.
It did happen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it still happens. What happens is you don't end up with as many contractors coming in, because they now have to get another option, so they know that they only have the, yeah.
Do you think we could get by with the first two weeks in April, I mean, May and November, or May and October?
So, I don't know.
Got a lot of leaves out there.
Still a lot. And then if I miss it by November 7th, am I waiting till December 1st? No.
No, because we'll probably be closed by then anyway.
Right. So, I, and I don't think two weeks is enough, just based off of everybody's.
So it's easier to do the whole month of May and the whole month of November or October?
Well, if you did the whole month of October, you really got through November 7th, so.
Yeah. So May and October, what do you think? We can try it. And again, monitor it, and if it's being abused, then people are going to lose that privilege.
Yeah.
But I think, right now, if we go with May and October, no, yeah, October.
May and October.
Keep it, keep it open for the whole month, those two months, then that gives people opportunity to go and take care of their yards.
Abuse it and we'll change.
And if it's abused, it will be changed.
Yeah, I think the last time we talked about it in July, we weren't opposed to saying, and I think Bruce would love it, if we said, no more brush dump. It's, it's one of those things that, it's nice to have. It's.
It is. I use it.
It is used by a lot of people out in the center.
I learned to work around the one week a month that it's been open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it does now, because then the other piece of that, too, remember, is because now, this is going to cost us to get rid of. So in December, in the winter months, that brush dump used to be burnt, and so that's what they would do, is go out there and burn that pile. We're not allowed to do that anymore. We now have to pay to have that chipped and hauled off.
And we pay by the tonnage on that?
Yeah. So that's now has become a new expense to us that we never had before.
So you even have to haul off raked leaves?
Yes.
That had deposited?
We're not allowed to keep a pile.
Goes into mulch pile, and then the mulch pile has to be hauled off.
Yep.
Goes in the mulch pile.
No.
What do you guys think?
So if you do the month of October, so now you just have the rest of this month through the first of November, that's not going to be a lot, but it does give you the extra on the May end.
We'll get through November 7th, but yeah.
Yep.
And then that might be it for the year.
Yeah, so for the moment, I mean, it may change, but for the moment, we're not much left in October. We have the first week of November.
We've got eight days.
Yeah, we can see what happens for this time, if we want to do a temporary opening of the, of the dump, brush dump until November 7th.
Yeah.
And then we'll see, see how many contractors dump stuff, and we can, we can change our mind.
And then wait for the spring and see what the winter gives us.
So starting tomorrow, you won't open it?
Starting tomorrow, keep it open, and then we'll deal with May after we see what the winter.
So keep it open till the 7th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Bruce. I appreciate you.
I think we had one person that had commented, that had reserved, right? Ron?
Yes.
We have one.
Ron?
It's just that people were asking me when I was out in the field.
Yeah, a lot.
They were asking if we could be open this weekend, or, sorry, easy answer that.
So the last part is to discuss other council business. Council Pichotti.
Good.
All right. Council Tibodo.
Yes, I'd like to remind our citizens that the police department will have trunk or treat.
Yes.
On October 27th from 2:00 to 5:00. That's Sunday, this coming Sunday.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you. Council Loret.
I'm Mossup.
Council Lawrence.
I know this was talked about a couple of weeks ago, about the town fountain road. Any status on that, Michelle? I know we.
Town fountain property?
Yeah, property.
So the town properties in general were slated to come to you for your November 20th meeting.
Okay. All right, Grange has their last supper this Saturday from 4:30 to 6:00. Then at 6:30 to 8:30, Elvis will be upstairs.
Elvis will be in the building.
Will be in the building.
I do actually have one thing.
That's it?
Go ahead, keep going.
Yep. I've been feeling some questions. I know this has been brought up multiple years, about the town office being open past hours on this one time a week to 7:00, because I know a lot of residents work past 5:00 and 6:00.
And what would that purpose be, for registering vehicles?
Yeah, just doing business, because we have residents that work.
I think I've seen that at other towns, and then typically they close earlier on.
No, well, some towns open during selectman meetings to 7:00. I know Benton, I know other towns do, too.
Right, and then they have other days that are a little shorter.
Right.
To compensate.
Right.
Staffing bucket is not increased.
Yeah.
So would you like Michelle to ask her staff and look at that?
I'm just, just bringing it up.
So is there, I mean, so, yeah, you have that? Is that something you'd be interested in?
I can get to the investigation that we did it on at the last time.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Also, too, elections coming up, I want to say, good luck to all the candidates out there for November 5th.
Very good. Thank you, Peter. And I will just kind of echo that. Good luck to all the candidates. Biggest thing, actually, more importantly, is that we live in a great country, and you have the right to vote. So please exercise your right to vote and come out, and I fully trust our election process, and I know that everything will work smoothly right here on November 5th. So I thank you for everything that you guys do to make it work. That's all I have.
I do, I do have one more.
Oh, yeah.
I know. Kevin Kitchen would beat me if I didn't say it. I just want to do a friendly reminder that Trails are closing soon for the, for the ATV Club, so in Fairfield, through October 30th, I believe, yeah, through October 30th, and then they do shut down. So be respectful. We had a great season.
It's been a great season.
A great season. A lot of, a lot of funding went into the Trails, and I think the way the season's ended, it's even better than the way they opened. So more work to be done next year. Excited for that, and, yeah.
Yeah. My, my son-in-law is building a house down on Martin Stream, and so, I mean, the amount of activity down there now is, it's really good to see.
Yep.
Thank you very much. So the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, to be held as a hybrid meeting in council chambers and via Zoom at 6:30 PM. This time, the council will recess and sign all documents that require the signature of council members.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Very good. Recess.
And then we have a session.